We're going to start this evening with a public hearing regarding B3 general business zone designation for a proposed annexation area along Armitage Road. We're going to start the public hearing, anybody who wants to speak to us? Hold on a second. Council members, do you want to, anybody have anything they want to say or let these people talk first?
Just for reference sake, this is 2.2 acres located along Armitage Road. I don't know else you want to know about it at this point. It's suggested to be a B3 business zone.
Yes.
It's part of the old, I shouldn't say old, University of State's property across Armitage that is contiguous with this. So there's an R, if you remember, there's a B3 zone in the front end of 682 and University of State. That front end, they decided was going to be a possible business zone at that time when the University of State came into annexation. I don't know what else to tell you.
Let's, audience, somebody who wants to talk to us?
Go ahead.
Go to the microphone, please. Introduce yourself, go ahead.
My name's James Stockwell, I'm one of the developers looking at which is moving the property once it becomes annexed, as has been discussed in the meeting room. And I just wanted to say that my business partner and I, Sean, believe that we have an opportunity to really add something to the Athens community and economy, and we're very looking forward to moving to the next step of the process and really just becoming a part of the business community here in Athens.
Can you remind us what you're planning to put?
Yes, we're planning on putting a small microbrewery. We'll have a 10-barrel system, and we are intending to focus sort of on French and Belgian styles of beer, but also kind of a little bit of everything. And we think that, you know, it really is an opportunity to have something like this piece of property in Athens, sort of dedicated to sort of like a manufacturing and food and beverage industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a, yeah, just a real quick question, I'm just curious, within your business plan, your model, jobs, how many jobs you think you'll be creating within the next year?
Um, well, I mean, I would like to say that we would be somewhere in the neighborhood of like five or so. I mean, it's really going to depend on how the business takes off. So certainly two at the very beginning, and hopefully somewhere quickly around five, and maybe long-term, something maybe around 10.
Good, so we are talking job creation here?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Other questions? No? Thank you. Somebody else who wants to speak?
Hi there, my name is Rusty Rittenhouse. I guess I can sign them later. I represent Alex Kalodis and his aunt's estate. They are the current owners of this property. In order to finalize the sale, we need this annexation to go through. If it doesn't go through, the sale is going to die, and there's other options at this point. We've asked to have it annexed because I guess there's a water issue, the supply for water that can only be taken care of through city utilities. I've learned quite a bit through this process. This is, I think we called it expedited annexation, which is kind of a weird term because I think gestation periods of whales may be shorter than this process is taking. I would really encourage you guys to grant this annexation so that this can close and these fellows can start a new business. It sounds like, I've listened to their ideas, it sounds like they have a great idea, and they've, maybe Sean can address some of the other ideas they have for the development of this property, but I think it's going to be an asset to our community.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Is there somebody else who wants to speak? We have Mr. Hope coming up.
For those of you that don't know me, my name's Ron Hope. My family's had dairy farm out there on 682 for over 100 years. Our property now is down to about 45 acres and the 2.3 acres of three parcels in the house on the corner of Armitage Road and 682. And I'm more or less next door neighbor to this property. Prior to this time, the property that's in question of being annexed was where my aunt and uncle and two cousins lived, part of the farm, other than being under their ownership. After that, they sold the property to Tim Hutton, who had a garage there in this structure that they're going to put the microbrewery in. I'm not a person that's against people wanting to start up a business. I have nothing against any individual in here, whether it's these two young gentlemen, they're wanting to start the brewery, whether it's a realtor, Mr. Kalodis that owns the property, any of you folks up here. But I have questions that need specific answers from certain people. I know that Armitage Road, it's only got 25 foot wide, side to side right-of-way, period. It's already been several years back. It was put in concrete with county commissioners. 25 feet is not the full width of the pavement of that road that people drive on. You can subtract about seven feet from that to eight feet. So that cuts it down considerably. More or less a lane and a half at the most. If you put a box truck, dual-wheel going up that road, it's a one-lane road. No bigger than what a lot of the alleys are in city Athens. One-way traffic until somebody can get there, until the other person gets by, which is going to mean, some point in time, if this is annexed and the city is, going to want to widen the road. And by their property being beyond my property down the railroad crossing and still tied with University of State's because they're on the opposite side of the road, and the University of State's on the opposite side of the road from my property, then there's going to have to be some negotiations on right-of-way, and I don't want a road up against the side of my house. Just for convenience of one person or two persons. On the other side of the road up there, if you were to go up the bank about four and a half feet, is where the pantry road was. And then it was sloped not as a 45-degree angle, but it dropped back down to about a 10 to 20-degree angle, and then it went back up to a 45-degree angle. You could drive a tractor 10 feet wide along that bank down through there inside that pantry road. Since they built in condos up there, a lot of the erosion from their shoving dirt around has made that whole hillside. So there are several tons of erosion that's come down here and made it more or less 45 or better degree angle gone all the way up from that road. And if there's going to be a widening on the right-of-way, it's going to be widened both sides, both ways, not coming over 20 feet towards my house and putting it up against the house. I'm sure every one of you folks there would not like that a bit. And I definitely wouldn't like it, my brother, the other half-owner, wouldn't like it a bit. He'd go ballistic, to say the least. They've got issue with sea water, or with water, and sewer both. The sewer lines in front of our house, between the house and 682, high-pressure sewer coming off University of State. The high-pressure pump for University of State is on the northwest side of University of State's entry. You'll see a building sitting up there. And it comes down in front of our house, line, I don't believe is any bigger than a four-inch line outside diameter. Goes all the way down the railroad, and I believe it goes on the inside of the railroad, Armitage side, all the way across the river and in. It doesn't go all the way to Union Street, that I know of. Because there were stakes down there along our right-of-way and the old right-of-way when they were staking stuff out last year. And it looked like sewer line stakes. I noticed again in the paper, when I was born and raised in Athens, inside the corporation spent, lived here for 25 years until I moved to Albany and got married. So I've been around Athens for years and years and years. My dad delivered milk all over this town and planes. When I went to school, had a lot of businesses here, in downtown Court Street, down Union Street, down Richardson Avenue. Not so many like there is down East State Street, but there were businesses, and down Columbus Road. Of course, as time goes on, every little town grows a little bit more. Albany used to be bigger than what it is by 10-fold before 1940. But anyway, like I say, I grew up here, Jimmy Sands grew up here, I know him, he's a graduate of mine. I don't know how long you folks have been around here. I know Pete's been around here for quite some time, or is it Alex, I'm sorry, and his brother Pete. But they were behind us in school. I've got them in a class here, but. But back then, how university was a smaller branch of education system. And over the years, it's multiplied. Downtown Athens, my recollection, counting one on Union Street over the hill, another one up closer to Court Street, three others below West Washington Street, zero on this block of bars. There's only two carryouts in the whole town, Mr. Coon and Mr. Besko. And there were, in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 18,000 people still in the city of Athens at that time. We had better industry, wasn't just OU. We had McPhee's, we had a tire mold place down here. We had several other in-town, more in-town dealers, car dealers, tractor dealers, various good businesses that employed more than four or five people. A lot of garages, there was a big garage down there at Morris Avenue and State Street.
I'm going to ask you to wind it up here.
The population per bar, or liquor license, whatever it is, whether it's a microbrewery, a carryout, a bar, it's got, I'm sorry, folks, and I'm not trying to stop a sale of property, but it's got too far out of hand. It's got way out of hand, and now you've got another bar that's wanting a license for a new bar down here where the old restaurant used to be. You just give one to the old West End Tavern, it's been fighting for four or five years, longer than that, because it was shut down long before I retired. The students are only in here nine months to seven months out of the year, total volume. Of course, I'm not for them being allowed to vote on anything that takes place in Athens unless they're lifelong residents. But still, it's out of hand. I was in the Navy in Norfolk, Virginia, they had the same thing. You go down and drive through Norfolk, Virginia right now, and it's a dead town. They still got a base, but it's a dead town. There is nothing in the five-block area that used to be there, and they had businesses just like we had in this town. Mom and pops, I, it just gut-wrenches me on how the operation of this city government, in my opinion, is allowing the university to take everything that goes on in this town, they're pushing everything out of town, and turning this into nothing but a drunken beer party. And I've talked with these guys, and they're willing to take care of any property damage or anything else, but it's just the idea.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you take any of your concerns that you just expressed tonight to the Board of Zoning when they were doing the hearings about?
The Board of.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, I was never made aware of any planning commission meeting on this. To be honest, this was it, and I was under the assumption, which, you know, that this was part of the planning commission. I was never given notice about the planning commission because I was a property owner, and there were two or three others. The only thing that was given was this letter here I got from the lawyer's office, and that was the extent of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hope.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Of our mayor. Has administration looked at the condition of the road in terms of for the B, if we zone it as a B3? I mean, obviously, when you zone for a B3, you're not talking about an alley, you're talking about a, so have we even, has administration discussed this issue?
We've been looking at the road off and on. Part of it's township, part of it is city. The annexation will actually add more city route to it. It is a cul-de-sac, it was, I forget how many owners live on it, eight maybe?
Well, not all the way back out to the farm.
Well.
Well, maybe about eight, yeah. I mean, I've been along that road.
So, you know, we would improve it once we get to, I think the front part's actually still township at this point.
But in order to get, so the township would have to also improve the road, you're saying?
We work, we share some roads with other entities, townships and the county, and we usually work out an agreement in terms of maintenance. We're still working that out. Again, this is still unfolding.
So the point that Mr. Hope is bringing up regarding if the right-of-way needed to be, it would encroach on his property?
We'd have to probably negotiate that, I think. I don't think we're at that point at this point. Again, as a brewery, there's not going to be a lot of travel, travel back and forth. Depends what ends up, isn't it?
Well, I'm just listening tonight to his concerns and what he suggested, and I don't know, it's the cart before the horse kind of thing, if we don't think we can upgrade the road and come to an agreement.
We can upgrade the road. 25-foot will do for most roads. We would like 40. We have alleyways that are 10, and we function with those.
Right.
I guess we could close those down for the 10, and say, let's give it up. If you remember, there was actually, part of the annexation was actually changed the layout of Armitage Road at one point. When Conner was doing that, he was going to run across the river, around, along the river, by the river.
Right.
Our concerns, I think, at that point, at this point, were the, was the wellhead detection aspect of it. But again, anything going into that location would have to be vetted anyway. I mean, it couldn't be polluted, it's just not done, EPA would stop the vetting, and we'd be the first line to say, let's not do that. Just, and again, the process is, it actually comes to us. We say what services we'll give, goes to the county commissioners, they have a meeting on it. You've had several discussions. Planning Commission also had looked at the recommendation. I believe the vote was, let's see, for zoning B3 was three yeses, one no. Nancy Bane was concerned about the neighbors, in one sense, so aware of that. But again, the majority ruled that it would be a B3. That's pretty much where it is right now. This is why we're having a public hearing. And you're on your third reading for both the annexation as well as the zone designation.
We are.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak.
Please.
My name is Andy Sylvia, I'm a real estate broker and licensed real estate appraiser as well. I'm representing Jim and Sean, both of whom grew up in Athens. Jim is Ohio University graduate, they both went to high school here in Athens, and longtime residents with their families as well. The Hope family has sold off other pieces for commercial development. The AEP building is part of it, University of State's, and they recently sold a field also to the city of Athens, I believe. But one of the things that I just wanted to show you folks, if that would be okay, is that when the state of Ohio widened out 682, they cut out a notch of Armitage Road so that it could be, excuse me, so that it could be widened at some future point as it comes out to 682, which is an excellent thing to do. The property from 682 back to where the brewery will be is about 300 feet, and it is the immediate neighbor behind Mr. Hope as he indicated. If it would please you folks, this is a parcel card showing where the widening could be because the state of Ohio kept that, or took that at that point, and then that's the B3 area there. That's the proposed brewery, and there's Mr. Hope's house. Did that bring up any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, we have to work out the water, the city of Athens wants the water and the sewer to go together. Okay, you folks are all aware of that. And we have plans, all drawn up, and estimates for both at this point, and we've also offered to put a right-of-way along the south edge of Mr. Hope's property to get away from the actual Armitage Road aspect of it. And we've got a survey estimate for doing that, to try to get the sewer line and the tap away from his house and away from Armitage Road as well. And we're certainly willing to pursue that as well. Any other questions?
How big a line is that?
I think it's going to be only a four-inch line.
Towards the sewer?
Yeah, the sewer line, because it's a force feed, they're going to have to have a grinder pump on location, grind it and force it into the sewer, so it's not a big line. And the right-of-way could be as narrow as 10 feet.
Which has not been adjusted yet, just to talk.
We had a meeting at Rusty's office last week with Mr. Hope, a luncheon meeting, and discussed several of these things. It certainly has not been finalized, but the idea was broad.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Just one other, to kind of expand on what Commissioner, I guess, Planning Commissioner Nancy Bane was concerned about. She was concerned about the impact of the zoning designation to the adjacent property owners. Does a brewery fit the location surrounding your property owners? And is B3, any balling works operations required to be at least 100 feet from an R-zone? Mr. Rittenhouse said that the property owner's ground of Vista, which would be the closest one, was in support if needed. That's the closest R-zone that's out there. Again, there's, the parts that aren't axed in aren't part of the city zoning whatsoever. Mr. Hope is outside that city limit. It's adjacent, has an adjacent open space because of the hillside, has the R3 where Grand Vista is, and then has the B3 in the front end of 682. And I'm just giving you this as information.
So, I have one question. So, do we have anything in writing from that owner? Who is?
Grand Vista?
I can get it if you need it, but I spoke to Gary Gitlitz, who's actually an intern at Columbus, who's just full support for it. Do you like something right after here?
From their point of view, I think it helps the subdivision, the University of State's subdivision to have some development, not a 682 in the adjacent area, rather than having it to be an apply of the city. So I can see where that's coming from.
Do you have other comments, sir? Please, no?
Hi, my name is Sean White. I'm one of the business partners with Jimmy, and we've been planning this business for about a year and a half now. I guess first off, I would actually really like to thank Ron Hope for coming. I mean, I think it has, it shows a lot of courage to be able to come to a council meeting on your own and speak your opposition when there's obviously a lot of other people here who would really like to see this happen. And it's very important to us to be good members of this community and also to be good neighbors. But at the same time, there may be no spots in the city that would have no neighbors that would object to a brewery being right next door. So we absolutely want to work with Ron on making this a congenial relationship, but we do really believe in this property, and I would like to tell you why, as well as address some of the concerns that Ron brought up. I think the first and, to me, the most substantial issue is the road with, I guess, what I can say is we can only control what happens on our property. We haven't been looking for any widening of the roads, per se. The brewery that we're creating The brewery that we're creating, though, is, it's not the size of the Jackio's production facility. It's really only going to be a little bit bigger than the Jackio's Brew Pub where I brew now. There will be deliveries during the week, during daytime hours. I don't have enough research yet to know if those will be coming in box trucks or semilas. But for the research that Jimmy and I did for this property, we realized we were going to have to make a truck turnaround point if we were to be able to put a brewery there. Because if you go down Armitage Road, there really are no other good turnaround points for a truck. So, we consulted with one of Jimmy's family friends who owns a trucking company, and they gave us advice, which I believe we should substantiate further, but they gave us advice on how to build out our parking lot on Armitage Road so that, so that a truck can turn around safely in there. And maybe I should just back up a tiny bit and say what Jimmy and my vision is that makes this spot so particular. When I first saw the spot, I actually didn't really think much of it. It's a, it's a two-acre plot with a pole barn that's kind of rolled, run down, to be honest. It has no sewer, it has electricity but no water, and it has no gas. Like, all of those things you totally need to start a brewery. But what we loved about it is we want to do a farmhouse-style brewery. And the idea is, not only do beer styles relate to what was traditionally brewed in Europe on farmhouse, but that we want to actually bring, like, some level of true farmhouse qualities into our brewery and actually have space on the land to farm things like hops and fruit trees. There are really not that many locations in and around Athens that you can do that in, especially because there's, there are a lot of, there are a lot of factors that we're trying to balance here. The other one is, we think about, we think about our fossil fuel usage and our waste. We don't want to put a brewery 20 miles out into the country where maybe we have all the land we want, but all of a sudden, you know, we care about sustainability. We don't want to put a brewery out 20 miles and everyone who wants to come drink our beer has to drive 20 miles to drink it. That just doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me. So, we were kind of looking for this balance of where can we be that's close to the city, but we can also have farmland? And where can we be that is accessible by bicycle path or by walking or by a quick taxi ride? You know, we don't want to have a business where we have to be responsible because someone went out and got in an accident. You know, that would be terrible. So, basically, what sold us on Armitage, it was, it was really on the, on a tipping point for a while. And once we heard about the city's plans to, to put the bike path through the adjacent field, it was like, it's on. Like, this is the place. I mean, we just wanted it so bad that, even though we realized, like, you know, we're going to have to, I'm sorry. It's been like, I've been like thinking about this for like the last like 10 or more years of my life, so it's getting a little worked up. Sorry, just a second. Anyway, that just sounds awesome, like, to have a brewery that we can, we can focus on sustainability. We can relate it to things that are grown locally. We can support other businesses. We can add to the wonderful craft brewing culture that is already in this town. Those are the things that we want to do. Sorry, I'll just be quiet now. I'll take a second. You guys can feel free to shoot any questions you have my way.
Question I had.
Sure.
What Mr. Sylvia gave us shows about six tenths of an acre. You were talking about two acres?
Yeah, it doesn't quite show up. Go ahead.
There's two parcels. There's one more parcel.
Oh, okay. 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 And, and we do have zoning regulations for business as well as homeowners zoning and talking about your, your building and stuff, but there would be some landscaping and separation from Mr. Hope's property, et cetera.
Yeah.
Taking all that into consideration.
Absolutely. And we've talked about, Jimmy and I have talked with Ron in person, as well as with Andy and Rusty and Alex. But essentially, the things that we've talked about were, I know one of, one of Ron's concerns was the Chestnut Tree. It's on the corner of 682 and, and Armitage. And, you know, Jimmy and I saw an opportunity that maybe we could avoid that issue completely if we could have Ron be amenable to anisement of a right-of-way on the other side of his property, which would, for us, run the, run the sewer line more directly also, which is an advantage on our side. I'll be, I'll be completely frank about that. But also could be, you know, maybe help him with some of his concerns. And I think Ron, as a, as a property owner, really does have very valid concerns about what goes in next to, next to him. I mean, as, especially in, in respect to, you know, some of the things he told us that have happened in the past with the building of the University Estates and stuff. But the other things that we spoke about were, so if we were to do that, changing the routing of our sewer, which, again, we need to clear that with Andy Stone, so I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but if that were okay, then, then we would be amenable to paying for the survey of the land. And that would survey both the property line in between our properties and also the property line between his property. And I believe the next one over is owned by the city. It's kind of on the track with the railroad tracks. So, we offered to essentially pay for that survey. And I think it would be a very reasonable request to put in a privacy fence there. The, the way that we have the brewery structured, our, our plans are to put the tap room, and there will be a tap, I want to be very frank about everything that we're doing. There will be a tap room much similar to the Jackio's production site tap room on Campbell Street that will be at our brewery. We do, we do want people to come out and drink beer responsibly at our property. That's, that's our biggest profit margin by far, is when people drink beer at our property. But, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little off track. Where was it? Sorry, was that? It's on the, yeah, exactly. It's on the far side of the building from, from 682 and from Ron's property. So, I think that will provide us with some normal, with some natural noise limitations there and keep the, keep, when it does say get fun, but not crazy. It won't be close to the renters at Ron's, at Ron's property. So, that's one of the things. You know, on the side that borders Ron's property, we would have some brewery operations going on during the week, during, during the weekday hours. That would include some truck deliveries, not every single day, but some deliveries. You know, once or twice a week, maybe three times a week, trucks either delivering things or coming back. But, and again, I think, you know, or there may be, you know, a forklift out there taking kegs from one area to another. But again, this is pretty small for brewery stuff. I don't want to paint too much of an industrial picture here. This is, this is a pretty small scale for a production brewery. Let me see what else. So, yeah, we, we talked about, and we didn't bring it up with Ron yet, but the idea of this privacy fence, which I think would be a very reasonable thing. I'm trying to think of, did I miss anything? Finally, I guess I'll, I'll leave this as my last point. You know, the last state that I lived in was Oregon. That's where I learned brewing from. That's where I learned professional brewing after I was a home brewer. And the drinking law, the drinking and serving people and laws in Oregon are very strict. I don't know exactly what the law is called, but Jimmy and I spoke about this very early on. Basically, in Oregon or Washington, if you, as a bartender, serve someone that is visibly intoxicated, and if they then go out and injure themselves or others in an accident, that you, as the bartender, are actually just as responsible in a legal sense, both monetarily and punitively, as the person that actually got in an accident. That might sound like a really harsh law, but at the end of the day, I think those borderline cases are probably, I don't think anyone's in jail on a horror story of like, oh, my gosh, I accidentally served somebody one beer, and then they got in an accident and they're doing 20 years in jail. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just curious if you can tell us what the capacity of the tap room would be and like, how many parts of the spaces would go along?
Absolutely. Our current indoor seating capacity is 47, and we're looking at possibly doing an outdoor patio, which again would be on that far side, where we might double that. We might be up to, close to 100 all told if we, on, I mean, we're, we're very optimistic about the traffic we might see out there, but that's what, that's what we hope to have the capacity for on our best days. You know, that's not a, that's not an everyday thing. And we, we think it will be seasonal, too. We think it will be the warm weather months. That's when we're going to see people, you know, when they want to come out and see the farm and the green space that we have and check out the tasting room and, you know, have a couple beers.
Mr. White, you mentioned something about the property, Ron's property, and I don't know if he should answer this. Are you, you said rental property?
It's, it's a rental.
So, Mr. Hope doesn't live there?
No.
Is that, you don't live?
My brother and I own the property. We're rented out.
Okay.
My father and my grandmother.
It's their homes, home property?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so it's a rental property?
Okay, just a second. Wait a second.
Hold that map.
Yeah. Oh, it's here.
There's, if it's like mine, there's a discrepancy. Okay, well, what they're wanting, what they've got annexed is this one and this one here.
Yeah.
And then I got this, too, and then the triangle that comes down here for a little, what, it's got like 0.3 acre.
And then there's ups down here.
And this is due down below, yeah.
Okay, that's what you showed.
Okay, thank you. But just to wrap up that point, we would like to, in the tasting room, voluntary, voluntarily implement the no serving of anyone that is intoxicated, visibly intoxicated means. Sorry, you're welcome to stay. We can call you a taxi. You can leave your car here if you want to, but you're done. It doesn't matter, you know, we don't, we're not trying to be a court street bar. We're not trying to have liquor. We may have some other breweries beer or wine there eventually, but I don't ever see us going into liquor. It doesn't suit our needs and doesn't fit the property.
What liquor license do you have?
We'll have an A1C, which is a, which is a brewery license. And that includes automatically a license to run the tasting room, to sell, to sell beer on site and to sell growlers or bottles for to-go, to-go sale.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Mr. White, I'm glad that you gave us some kind of reference when you mentioned that your capacity would be slightly larger than, than the pub for Jackio's. But can you kind of tell us how many gallons per year you're talking about?
Absolutely.
An even easier term to think about is bottles per year that you're talking about in terms of production?
It would be a lot easier to do kegs per year.
Okay, kegs is fine.
But, so, we're, we're purchasing a 10-barrel system, which 10, 10 barrels, each barrel is 31 gallons. So, we're talking about 300 gallons of beer per batch. And so, that basically translates to each batch ends up to being 18 to 20 kegs of beer. In our, at our starting pace, we really only slated to brew two times a week. So, that's a production of 40 kegs per week. So, that means that in our starting year, starting year, let's see here, 20 barrels per week, that's 80 barrels a month. The Jackio's production site does that, and they do double that every week. So, it's, it's pretty small potatoes for, for a production-sized brewery. So, we're kind of, we're kind of riding that line in between a brew pub-size operation and a, and a really small production operation. And we're just hoping to, you know, basically have the most traffic out to the brewery to really make it a destination so that, you know, we'll essentially be able, we'll be able to be profitable at that small production size. So, and, and to go on as far as what we might expand to, I believe that the types of beers that we want to do, that property will never be viable for more than like 2,000 barrels a year. You would really have to get things cramped in a way that I don't think we really want to do to get above 2,000 barrels a year there. It's a, it's a small building. It's 24, 2,500 square feet as it stands. And even if we make an additional barrel storage building, even if it matched that, even if it was another 2,500 square feet, I mean, we're just, we're just not going to be able to produce that much barrel-aged and like Belgian-style beer per year. It's small. We want it, we want it to be small.
Okay.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think that's helpful for everyone, too, to kind of hear what you're talking about production-wise. So, you're, in essence, as I'm hearing it, you're not talking about 40-foot tractor-trailers rolling in there to haul your kegs all over the place. You know, it's probably, it sounds small.
No, but just to be really upfront, you know, there, there would be some times, you know, one would be during build-out when, when we actually receive our, our brewing equipment, that, that's going to come in shipping containers. And that's going to be a logistical issue that Jimmy and I are going to have to figure out. I mean, there's a chance that that truck might not be going down Armitage Road at all. There's a chance we might have to ask that truck to like pull over in the AEP parking lot, and we'll be taking them over with like, you know, equipment from Bedrock or something. It's probably going to be like a major headache. Like, we're, like, we're committed to the property because we think it's awesome. But to be honest, like, we're not taking any easy ways, easy ways out here. I mean, it'd be much easier to go to, you know, an industrial site, an industrial park where there's already sewer run, there's already gas, electricity, and they're ready for businesses like us. And that's why a lot of breweries end up in places like that. No offense to them, because it's a smart move, honestly.
The other question I had has to do with, with, you mentioned it, farming and agriculture. So, on part of the property that's all being annexed under a rezoned as a B three, there will be farming that's going on within that?
Yeah, it would be farming just for the use of the brewery. And if we ever had a kitchen, then we might have some, you know, it's essentially like farm-to-table cooking, but it's, it's farm-to-table brewing. And it's, it's not an appreciable, it wouldn't be an appreciable amount of our overall raw materials. It might be, I mean, we might grow, you know, 1% of our total hops usage per year on the property, but it's enough to do like every fall, have like a fresh hop beer where you literally pick hops right off the vines or you have all your beer fans come and pick hops off the vines and party, and then you, and then, and then you brew a batch or two of fresh hop beer with it. You know, it's, it's things like fruit trees that maybe you get 50 pounds of fruit or whatever, but that's enough to do like two barrels of something really special where all of that, I should back up. We're going to be doing a lot of barrel-aged beers, barrel-aged sour beers and stuff. And, you know, one of the traditions with that type of beer is to add fruit, and they become kind of wine-like. So, if we have things like cherry trees or raspberry bushes, I mean, this is long-term, too. Like, this isn't all going to happen at once. Like, the agricultural side, you know, we just need to start brewing, and then we're going to focus on the farm part as soon as we can. But it's not imperative to start, but that, those are the plans for the land.
Excuse me, the farming part's like you have the backyard and gardens.
It's not, it's not farming, but.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Yeah, well, my, my question, I guess, the reason I asked the question, and in this I don't know, and this is a question for the mayor, I think, is within a B two or B three, rather, is, are agricultural practices allowed within a B three, or does it matter?
I don't, I think it's allowed.
Okay.
I could, I could kind of feel you, that's where you were going with that one. And we could probably do a little more research on that on our end. We're not looking at selling any of the farm stuff on its own, like, we're not going to come to the farmer's market with cherries. So, that probably changes things a bit. I don't know, sure.
But it's all part of the operation, then?
Yeah, that would all be going back to our stuff.
Any other questions?
Thank you again, and I appreciate everyone's comments regarding this. A question I had, Mr. White, was regarding food as well. Do you foresee the, the location operating that you're hoping to operate? Do you foresee lunch or dinners there as well and involvement in the 30 Mile Meal Project? Could you expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Yeah, absolutely. So, just to think about where to start. We absolutely want to have food. We think it's a way to keep people there and to slow down drinking and to kind of just allow them to have a good reason to come out, I guess. But at the same time, at the beginning, we, again, we want to focus on making great beer. And we're not trying to start a brew pub. At the beginning, we'll definitely have at least snacks. And we're looking to make the right connections with hopefully some local or entrepreneurial-type people that will be able to come out and provide food. Well, I'd love to have, if we could get it, like an amazing food truck that was there all the time. But they're running their side of the operation, they've got the kitchen permits, and we're running our brewing side. And it's just a symbiotic relationship, like no money exchanged. That's, I think, probably our ideal situation for starting. One food cart or multiple food operations that would come in, sort of like the Jackio's Tap Room does that right now. They have different food businesses that are there every night of the week. And, you know, if things go really well, I mean, I guess I could see us having a kitchen there someday. Maybe things go swimmingly well and we're ready to do an expansion. Maybe at that time, we say, hey, we're going to make this a little bit more of a restaurant. We're going to add a small kitchen, maybe wood fire pizza oven or something like that. So possibly someday. Yeah?
Thank you. Okay. Other questions, comments here? No?
Anybody else need to speak?
Moment. Okay, this was, Mayor, could you have?
Just make sure everybody signs in for the public hearing record.
If you haven't signed in, especially if you're speaker.
No, it's over here.
Could you come up, please, so the microphone could get you?
Alex.
Excuse me?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil.
The month of August, what will be your schedule?
There is no schedule.
There is no schedule. That's why I was afraid. So if you don't make a decision today, this will be tabled until September. I'd encourage you, if you would, to take this under consideration tonight instead of tabling it. We've been at this a very long time, trying to get this completed. And this closing cannot happen until the annexation is granted. So I'd urge you to take this under consideration tonight if possible.
This evening's agenda was the public hearing that we just had, discussion about what's happening. And now we have a session, a special session, to adopt the zoning regulations that would allow this to happen or not. So to make sure that everybody's had their chance to speak at the public hearing, we are going to close that part of the evening and establish a quorum for our special session. We have two members who are absent, which gives us five voting members, which is allowed for special sessions. And we have two ordinances for third reading. We've already read both of these twice, and this is the third reading for acceptance or not. Ordinance 7014, an ordinance accepting the petition for an annexation of approximately 2.2064 acres located along Armitage Road, introduced by Councilmember Fall, who is not here. Member Reisner?
Well, I guess it falls to me because I think I'm vice chair of that committee, is that right?
I think so.
Okay. Well, like you said, we've had two readings on this. This is the third. First reading, Member Fall read the ordinance, 7014. Do you think it's necessary to read it again?
No.
In that case, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 7014.
A second.
Mayor, did you have anything to talk about? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 7014 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7114, an ordinance designating the zone for the annexation area proposed along Armitage Road. Member Reisner?
Okay. Again, we've had two readings on this. The designation that's been decided upon is a B3 manufacturing, and this facility would fall under that as a bottling facility. So I make a motion to accept and approve ordinance 7114 for adoption.
Second. Okay.
Mayor.
I'd point out that B3 and manufacturing are two different zones. This is a B3. Manufacturing is like...
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Thank you. Yes.
And I see what the whereas is. This was first brought up to the Planning Commission March 20th, and you had a public hearing July 28th, today. So we've gone through mostly steps. We've gone through the steps.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge my support for the ordinance, but I wanted to encourage the future property owners to continue to have a dialogue with Mr. Hope. I think that's important. And I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. It sounds like there's been a lot of thought into this process and business plan. But again, I believe that the importance and value of communication and the consideration taken there is important and necessary.
Good point. All those in favor of ordinance 7114 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance is adopted. And so we have adopted both ordinances, and we're going to adjourn unless anybody has any comments.
Next meeting is the 2nd of September, I believe?
Yes.
So we have a hiatus.
Monday?
Tuesday.
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 Because it's a holiday, yeah. Tuesday, September 2nd, 7 o'clock. But we have adopted both of these ordinances. Okay, thank you.